Just before we get going to the folks at home, the thousands watching, don't be freaked out. The mayor is on a fact-finding mission with a delegation from Metro Vancouver. My name is councillor Nick Balkin. I'm the acting mayor in his stead for this month. And also, just before we get going, for the benefit of council, members in the gallery and also the viewing audience, I want to welcome a new member to our staff. Dave Critchley is our new Director of Public Safety and Community Services. Welcome, Dave. I think a lot of people in the community are familiar with Dave's work prior to his new position, and we welcome him. Forward to working with you. If I can have a motion to reconvene the open meeting? Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Proclamations, we have a number of proclamations, and we will start with Homeless Action Week. Councillor Jordan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Homelessness Action Week, from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby, proclamation. Whereas every day in our community, there are men, women, seniors, youth, and children who do not have a place to call home, and whereas community action and participation are essential in addressing and eliminating issues and circumstances that contribute to homelessness, and whereas during this week, activities and events will be offered, and the community will be encouraged to learn about the many issues related to homelessness, the community and government agencies that offer services and support that work for persons who are homeless, and what each of us as citizens can do to creatively and collectively address homelessness in our communities. Now therefore, I, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, do hereby proclaim the week of October 9th to 15th, 2016, as Homelessness Action Week in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you, councillor Jordan. Our second proclamation, International Trigeminal Neurolgia Day. Councillor Wang.
Thanks. Proclamation, International Trigeminal Neurolgia Day. Whereas Trigeminal Neurolgia T N is an chronic face pain known as tic, or rocks considered in the medical profession as the worst pain known to mankind, and whereas T N patients' face, T N patients' face are sensitive to the slightest touch, electronic, electrical shocks, fireworks, feels like someone is tasing your face, and whereas the T N is usually caused by a blood vessel laying on the nerve that controls the movement in your face. Eating facial expression and speaking will cause extremely pain, and whereas medications might control the pain until you make a decision to explore surgeries. Surgeries are successful for some people. There is a large proportion that have T N pain caused by other reasons, and medications and surgeries are considered bad aids. This group suffers from continuous brutal pain, and whereas together we will end the loneliness, isolation, and painful days that T N patients have to endure with your support by letting up until or blue on October 7th. Now therefore, Derek Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim October 7th, 2016, as International Trigeminal Neurolgia Day in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you, councillor Wang. Our third proclamation, Manufacturing Month. Councillor Dallywell, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby, proclamation, Manufacturing Month. Whereas manufacturing makes a significant contribution to British Columbia's economy and the prosperity of its citizens, and whereas Burnaby is home to over 250 manufacturers with many leading innovation in sectors such as electronic products, food manufacturing, and wood products, and whereas in British Columbia, manufacturing is the third-largest contributor to the provincial economy, generating $15 billion in value-added output equivalent to 7.3 of all economic activity in British Columbia, and whereas over 67.6% of the province's exports are manufactured goods, and whereas every dollar in manufacturing generates $3.50 elsewhere in the economy, and whereas manufacturing provides well-paying, high-skill employment opportunities to 172,000, 172,500 people across the province with wages that are nearly 15% higher than the provincial average, and whereas Canadian manufacturers and exporters and partner organizations such as Board of Trade, Boards of Trades, Chambers, municipal and provincial governments are presenting an intense calendar of events, industry tours, workshops, and student initiatives, including the B.C. Manufacturing Hall of Fame Awards through the month of October to heighten the profile of manufacturing and reinforce that manufacturing professions and skill-plates occupations and inspiring and rewarding careers. Now therefore, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim that October 1st to 31st, 2016, as Manufacturing Month in the City of Burnaby. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dallywell. Our next proclamation, World Cerebral Palsy Day. Councillor Kang. Oh, I'm sorry, missed one, I'm sorry, my apologies. National Teen Driver Safety Week. Councillor McEnell.
Thank you, Your Worship. National Teen Driver Safety Week. Whereas driving is an important and exciting rite of passage for youth, is also one of the riskiest activities young people engage in, and whereas teen driver safety is a significant issue in Canada, young drivers are overrepresented in all road-related injuries and fatalities. And whereas the National Teen Driver Safety Week is a week dedicated to raising awareness and seeking solutions to preventable teen deaths on roads across Canada, everyone has a role to play in creating a change amongst their peers, in the classrooms and in their communities. Now therefore, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, hereby proclaim October 16th to 22nd, 2016, as National Teen Driver Safety Week in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you, councillor McEnell. Now, World Cerebral Palsy Day. Councillor Kang, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Proclamation, World Cerebral Palsy Day. Whereas the full and effective participation of people living with cerebral palsy expresses an inherent dignity and worth of all persons, and whereas Burnaby is committed to the elimination of all barriers, including physical and attitudinal, that would preclude the participation of all persons in the life of the community, and whereas cerebral palsy is the most common physical disability in childhood, and is a non-progressive neuromotor condition affecting 17 million people worldwide, including some 15, sorry, 50,000 Canadians. In British Columbia, there are 10,000 people closely connected to someone living with cerebral palsy, and whereas the Cerebral Palsy Association of British Columbia joins hundreds of organizations in more than 50 countries to celebrate and to build a global community committed to creating a better world for people living with cerebral palsy, and to see all people living with cerebral palsy to enjoy life without limits. Now therefore, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, do hereby proclaim that October 5th, 2016, as World Cerebral Palsy Day in the City of Burnaby. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kang. And the last proclamation I have, and it's for World Mental Health Day. Whereas World Mental Health Day is an education and awareness campaign designed to encourage people to talk, reflect, and engage with others on the importance of mental health and the reality of mental illness, and whereas nearly 1 in 5 Canadians will suffer a mental disorder in their lives, the remaining 4 Canadians will be affected by a mental illness through a family member, a friend, or coworker, and whereas of the 10 leading causes of disability worldwide, 5 are mental disorders, major depression, schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, substance abuse disorder, and obsessive-compulsive disorder, and 30 to 40% of disability claims are for depression, and whereas stigma is the number-one reason people do not seek or receive treatment, and whereas mental health literacy and education are vital in the prevention, so early recognition will help reduce in the severity of this disorder. Now therefore, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim October 10th, 2016, as World Mental Health Day in the City of Burnaby, and urge all citizens to cooperate enthusiastically in supporting the effort of this organization, and encourage the public to learn more about this disability. And I'm just going to step down and present a copy of this proclamation to Sherry O'Neill and Joanne Greenwood, if you can join me at the front. Who would like that? You got that there? Congratulations, thank you very much for all the work you're doing in regards to this.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. Got it? Thanks very much, you bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, and thanks for all the work you did. All right, council, if I can now have a motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting held on September 19th of 2016? Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed and carried. And a motion to adopt the minutes of the public hearing held on September 20th, 2016? Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Now, if we can have a motion to resolve in a committee of the whole? And which brings us to committee, committee reports. Let me get in here. And the first committee report is the Executive Committee of Council, and councillor Dallywell, I believe.
Thank you, Your Worship. On behalf of the committee, I make the following recommendations. The question number 1636 is from Burnaby Community Services. The recommendation is that this grant request be denied.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
Question number 1637, Christmas luncheon dinner grants. Recommendation is that a grant in the amount of $8 per person be awarded to senior groups applying for the 2016 Christmas luncheon dinner grants.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
Item number 1613, B.C. Sustainable Energy Association. Recommendation is that this grant request be denied.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
Question number 1639, Burnaby Arts Council, that an, recommendation is that an in-kind grant in the amount of $1,000 be awarded to the Burnaby Arts Council for printing promotional material and signage for the 45th Annual Deer Lake Craft Festival to be held on November 20th, November 18th to 20th.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
Item 1640, Tourism Burnaby. Recommendation is that an in-kind grant up to the amount of $25,000 be awarded to Tourism Burnaby to assist with the cost of facility rental and staff in support of the 2016 World Taekwondo, World, WDF, World Taekwondo Junior Championship to be held on November 16th to 20th at Bill Copeland Center.
Moved and seconded, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, opposed and carried.
Item number 1641, saying, and is that this grant request be denied?
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed and carried.
Item 16 dot 42, Your Worship, Volunteer Burnaby. Before I make the recommendation, I just wanted to announce that when the committee considered this request, since then, a decision was made, but since then, some further information has come to light, so I would recommend that this grant request be referred back to the executive committee for further consideration. 48, that an in-kind grant up to the amount of $6,000 be awarded to the Royal Canadian Legion North Burnaby Branch 148, to assist with the cost of obtaining tents, chairs, and P.A. system for use at the Confederation Park Senator on November, on November's Day of 2016.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, opposed and carried. That's the end of... Thank you, councillor Dallywell. Which brings us to our second committee report, Financial Management Committee, in regards to emergency power at select key city facilities, and I believe councillor Johnson, your committee.
Your Worship, on behalf of the committee, I would move the council approve the emergency backup power supply framework for select key city facilities as outlined in section four of the report.
Thank you.
Your Worship, the report that's before us is setting up a framework for the eventual addition of emergency backup power in key facilities around the city, and that's partly so that we can maintain our, our day-to-day operations in a mild disaster such as a power or windstorm, but more so that we can offer a dry, warm place for people that have found that their power's been out for 48 hours or whatever, and need to come in and charge their phone and be, be warm and, and just talk to somebody because it's, it's a kind of a, an issue that, that people can deal with better than others. The report that's before us is, again, not oriented towards emergency preparation like earthquakes, but is to offer both facility power so that we can keep our cash registers and whatever open, but also that we can offer enhanced service to the community.
Thank you, councillor Johnson, any further discussion? Councillor Jordan.
It's an accident, I'm sorry.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, opposed and carried. And again, the Financial Management Committee, councillor Johnson.
This one's regarding permissive exemptions from taxation for 2017, and I would move that council authorize staff to bring down a taxation exemption by law to permissively exempt properties listed in attachment for the report from property taxation in 2017.
Thank you, Your Worship.
We have a longstanding practice of, of, of working with them towards exempting certain parts of their buildings from municipal property taxation. The report that's before us has a comprehensive list of properties, and there's nothing new this year, they're pretty much longstanding facilities that are before us, and I think it's a really good program in relation to the benefit that the city gleams from, from the exemption of taxation.
Great, thank you, councillor Johnson, any discussion? Why don't we, why don't we break tradition and have you read out all 369 properties that we exempt in the city for their fine work?
Move adjemment.
All right, maybe next year. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, opposed and carried.
And again, the... Your Worship, regarding biweekly garbage collection, I would move the council authorize staff to implement biweekly curbside and multifamily residential curbside garbage collection, and the proposed changes outlined in section two of the report.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Moved and seconded.
This is a report, the City of Burnaby has watched, most of our neighbors, as we introduce more recycling, some of our neighbors have gone to a biweekly pickup of garbage, being that once you recycle all the things that are recyclable, you basically have much less garbage to, to have picked up and disposed of at the dump or incinerator. The report that's before us is setting up, or suggesting that Burnaby also in the new year start a biweekly garbage pickup. This would be, what the situation would be here, would be the garbage will be picked up every 2 weeks, but your recycling and green waste orders will be picked up weekly. So your smelly garbage would go into your green waste recycler, and you're leave pretty much a benign garbage situation that would be picked up on a biweekly basis. We have watched pretty much most of our neighbors, we've seen the mistakes that some of our neighboring municipalities have made, and some of the benefits that, that they've achieved, and I think that we've got a plan that's before us that I think is, is going to be quite successful. The, one of the, the benefits that, that our neighbors have seen is that once you institute this type of garbage pickup, your compost and recycling rates will increase, people will then put more stuff into the, into the green waste and recycling containers that should be there, that's currently going into the garbage, and, and as a fact, the cost of, and operation of our garbage should drop. The proposal that's before us is, in the short term, recommending that we, that we offer as part of the process, the capability of those, those homeowners that don't feel comfortable with their existing garbage container, would have the option to upsize or downsize, and for a 2-year period, we would waive the $50 change fee on their containers, so with those that don't feel comfortable with their current-sized container would be able to contact the city and have their container changed either up or down. I think that's pretty much it, the report that's before us outlines the proposal that's before us. I think it's quite, myself looking forward to it, I know some people will have growing pains, but I know I've basically since the beginning of summer been putting my garbage out every 2 weeks, and it works quite successful. You, your biological garbage out of the garbage system, it doesn't smell, and it, biweekly system seems to work quite well, so I'm, it's going to be a positive thing for the city.
Thank you, councillor Johnson, I have 2 speakers, councillor Kang.
Thank you, Your Worship. I am looking forward to a biweekly garbage collection. I know lots of our neighbors in neighboring cities have started that, and at first, you know, friends who live there have their concerns, but eventually they came to just, just really praise the wonderful services that their government has done, and I'm looking forward for the City of Burnaby to begin that process as well. What I see some of the benefits as in biweekly garbage collection is that people will take more time to wash out their boxes, or their styrofoams, or to collect pieces of plastic that could be recycled. I, I see people doing more to make sure that their garbage cans are not filled up as well, if there are concerns about smelliness in their garbage, as councillor Johnson has stated before, people will take more care into making sure that all of the organics are properly disposed of. What I'm looking forward to, and I want to just remind the public, is that, that there is no additional service, sorry, no additional cost to removing of bulky items, and so part of the service that will be benefiting from the biweekly garbage is that we will be able to, in a more timely fashion, pick up bulky items that are disposed, but to further help our staff, you do not need to secretly take your bulky items into the ravines or the highway, you could actually just call engineering up and they will come in, pick it up from your curbside as well. I was part of the epic cleanup this weekend, and I do notice a lot of garbage by our curbside or street side and our bushes, and so this will also increase the enhancement of our streetscape litter collection as well. So I am looking forward to this, and I want to thank staff for being very cognizant of what we need and going forward with our green initiative in keeping Burnaby very environmentally clean for our future. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, councillor Kang, and I have councillor McEnell.
Thank you, Your Worship. The, one of the other benefits is, is because of the statutory holidays, when you have the regular pickup, it's always a problem when you have a stat holiday during the week, and most of the stats will fall on a Monday, so this is going to be a 4-day-a-week operation with longer hours, with the trucks and the drivers picking up, and so the week, you have the, for example, you have a Monday stat, everybody will move ahead 1 day for that week only, and then revert right back to their normal pickup, so if your Monday is your normal pickup, and there's a stat that week, you'll hit a pickup on a Tuesday, and then the following week, you go back to your regular Monday. It saves on overtime for us trying to get caught up when we have a stat holiday and stuff, but also is that we're going to be able to divert some of our equipment into going around to pick up stuff that's been discarded by citizens on the wayside, whether it's mattresses, furniture, whatever, and people just dump it because they don't want to take it down to the dump, they figure they're going to have to pay for it, or whatever the issue of trying to get it down there, is that we'll have more vehicles on the road to be able to go around, and hopefully we can keep the city a lot cleaner than we are now in a more timely manner. Because one of the things is, on the mattresses, is they stay out there and they get wet, the cost of those wet mattresses is about 5 times what it is for a dry mattress, so we tell people, when you're putting it out, cover it up and phone, and they'll get there hopefully within the day to pick it up, and it'll be less expensive for the city to dispose of it, because once it's wet, then we've got to tear it all apart and stuff because of the, the wet material that's in there can't circulate with the other stuff, so I see the benefits of it, there'll be, there'll probably be a few growing pains as people understand it, but with the longer workday, you can still cover the city off, you'll still get the, the service that you had been getting before, and I know I live in a condominium, and we used to have 4 garbage bins, we're down to 2 garbage bins now, we might possibly go up to 3, we'll test it out and see what happens, but the recycling bins were always increasing, we only had 5 when we started, now we're up to 9, because people are more and more recycling all the time, and that's a good thing, because it's keeping it out of the landfills and stuff, and especially the plastics and stuff like that, the styrofoam that doesn't break down, is not going into landfills now, and the majority of us getting recycled, so I think there's a win-win on this on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McEnell. Seeing no further discussion, call question, all those in favor.
I would move the council approve the revision of the 2017 business license fees as set out in the report. 14% compounded consumer price index, so they are a little out of date, just to be, to be mild with it. The report recommends, recommended rates for managers that really matter are the first year proration and renewal fees, and see that the rates have, in some cases, fluctuated, but they are on a cost-recovery basis in relation to what it costs to service and inspect those various classes of business licenses.
Thank you, councillor Johnson, any discussion? I just, just one brief comment, I, as I was looking at the report, and I, I was reminded how the lower mainland is changing over the last years, and one of the, one of the issues are, one of the businesses being removed from the schedule, booming ground and log sorting. Remember when we used to have a booming ground and a log sort in the City of Burnaby? Well, that's long gone, but...
Showing age.
Exactly right, I am showing my age.
Yeah, no more disco techs either.
And no more, I, I noticed that teen disco techs, whatever happened to them? Still got my platform shoes, I think somewhere in the closet, but anyways, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, opposed and carried, which would bring us to the manager's report. And, yeah, and here we are. Item 1, and this is the, the recommendation, item 1, this is in regards to boarding, lodging, and rooming houses. Recommendation, the council authorize preparation of a bylaw mending the Burnaby zoning bylaws outlined in section 3 of this report, and the bylaw be advanced to first reading on October 30th and to a public hearing on October 25th at 7:00 P.M. Councillor Jordan.
Thank you to staff for bringing this forward. I, I have seen some of the issues that have arisen in our city with regard to inappropriate uses of single-family homes for, or things that call themselves group homes and things like that, which we aren't really, and there are just people who unfortunately are taking in lodgers and using their single-family home for purposes that was never really intended, so, so I thank staff for bringing forward this report and the recommendations that we'll hopefully be able to... will hopefully be able to assist us in managing those situations. And I think we've had a few instances in Burnaby, but I know that some other cities have had a lot more and it's caused a lot of problems. So, so this is not Airbnb. This is about basically people inappropriately using their home as, as a, almost like a group home or a situation like that. But when it's not regulated, it's not a government agency, it's not something like that, it's just them renting out rooms in their house to, to single individuals and a large number of single individuals in some instances. So hopefully this adjustment in this bylaw will be able to help assist us get a handle on any of those things that may eventuate in the city.
Thank you, Counselor Jordan. And I agree with you. I thank staff also for bringing it forward. I recall that in our city, over the years, we've had a number of issues with self-appointed recovery and rehabilitation homes that were setting up in a single-family zoning with absolutely no licensing or any regulation from, let alone municipal, but from provincial regulatory bodies. So I thank staff for bringing this forward. I, at least we have another, another way we can get a handle on the issue. So thanks again for that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Item two. And the recommendations being that the unauthorized structures erected by Mr. Frederick Kooten on park property across the laneway from 3785 Edinburgh be removed. Staff provide Mr. Kooten with information on existing community gardens in Burnaby and on the considerations for their establishment within the city. And three, that a copy of this report be sent to Mr. Kooten. Kooton, I think, maybe, maybe I might be mispronouncing, but my apologies. Any discussion? Oh, Counselor Kang. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor McNell, you, no, you didn't call her. Counselor Kang, sorry.
Thank you, Worship.
My mistake.
I just wanted to comment that I do understand where Mr. Kooton's coming from and the efforts that he has put forth to beautify his back lanescape and also his intentions to provide a nice playing ground and a place for his kids or any of his neighbor is well-intended. But I guess ultimately laws are made so that we have to follow them. And so section five of Burnaby's park regulation bylaw provides that no person shall cut, break, injure, damage, deface, destroy, foul or pollute any personal property or tree, crop, plant, turf or flower in any park. I know, Worship yourself, has visited this beautiful place that Mr. Kooton has, has helped beautify. But I just wanted to say that parklands are parklands and they belong to the public and that there are wonderful places that we have designated as community gardens and so that we will be directing Mr. Kooton to places where we can plant community gardens. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Kang. And now, all those in favor of the report. Opposed, carried. Item three, Remembrance Day Parade, North Burnaby. Moved and seconded. And the recommendation, council approved the parade as discussed in this report and a copy to Mr. Sam Castagnier and Dave Taylor, President of the Royal Canadian Legion, 148. Any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor, opposed and carried. Item four. Moved and seconded, item four, and this is a house demolition. The recommendation, the council approved the demolition and/or disposal of the structure and outbuildings at 7176 Seventeenth Avenue. Counselor Jordan.
Just a quick question of staff. Do we own the property next door as well? Because I was Googling it today and I noticed that it's vacant and there's no building on it, but just wonder if we have several properties on that block for consolidation.
Worship, we do have three lots that are all adjacent on that block.
Oh, okay.
Any further discussion?
We should cut the grass.
There we go. Duly noted. Engineering and parks can arm wrestle over who's responsible for it. I know they do it every year, so. All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor. Opposed and carried. Item five. And this is a license agreement between Cliff Avenue United Football Club. Any discussion? None, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Which brings us to item. Item six, and the recommendation, the council approve a contract award to Vector Engineering Services Limited for an estimated total cost of $584,767.05, including GST, and the amount of $27,846 outlined in this report. And seeing no discussion. All those in favor, opposed and carried. And the recommendation, the council approve a contract award to Standard Electric BC for an estimated cost of $314,000, including GST, and the amount of $14,000 for, as outlined in this report. And this is in the conversion of our, our streetlights to LED streetlights. Moved and seconded and seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, opposed and Moved and seconded and this is always the popular asphaltic concrete pavement repair award. Recommendation being the council approve a one-year contract to Black Creek Paving for an estimated cost of $383,000, including GST, as outlined in this report. Questions been called? All those in favor, opposed and carried. And now, item 5.9.
Would last to be excused because I may be in a conflict of interest with the new Vista Citizen Chair of the Trustees.
All right, well, first off, let's see here, and we need, on item, oh, if I can get a recommendation on item one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Item one, the R5 district, am I doing this right? Right? Okay, so this is item one, this is the 6449 and 6469 Selma Avenue. And I think if we could. The table, yeah, that's why I'm looking for a tabling motion. Counselor Jordan moved to table, seconded by Counselor Johnson. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Thank you. Apologize for the confusion there, counsel. That was my doing, I think, more than anybody else's. Item two. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I know probably not, but Counselor McNell and Jordan, I see you on the speakers list? Just hold, just hold that button, just hold the button down for two seconds. Anyways, all right, so item two, all those in favor. We've got a mover and seconded, yeah. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Item three. Been moved and seconded, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Item four. Moved seconded by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? This is Gilly Avenue from CD Comprehensive to R4. All right, seeing no further discussion, questions called? All those in favor, opposed and carried. Item five. All right, it's been moved and seconded, seeing no speakers, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Item six. Been moved and seconded, seeing no speakers on the list, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Item seven. Moved and seconded, seeing no speakers, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Brings us to item eight. Been moved and seconded. Seeing no speakers, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Just one moment, counsel. All right, sorry, counsel, item nine. Sorry, it's moved, moved by Counselor Kang, seconded by Counselor Johnson. All right, and the recommendations, the amendment to the metro, oops, there we go. And Counselor McNell is excusing himself from this rezoning and the recommendations, that the amendment to the Metro Town Center Development Plan to incorporate the local commercial and non-market rental use and density, as outlined in section 41 of this report, be approved, to take effect upon the granting by council of second reading of the rezoning bylaw related to the subject site, and to that the planning and building department be authorized to continue to work with the applicant towards the preparation of a suitable plan of development for presentation to a public hearing on the understanding that a more detailed report will be submitted at a later date. And I see Counselor Jordan on the speakers list.
I, I have a million questions about this proposal. The Director of Planning was kind enough to let me know in advance that, that it's coming forward and it sounds like one of the most exciting opportunities that, that we have had in a, in a long time, in that it proposes that BC Housing builds in our community, non-market rental housing, in association with also a high-rise market tower in the, in the Metro Town area. So it looks like this is an opportunity for the kind of thing that we've been hoping and praying for. And I really look forward to seeing a lot more detail about just what this proposal is going to encompass and, and working with, you know, our planning department, with the province and the developer to see how this will work. Because I think this is part of perhaps what Minister Coleman was talking about a few weeks ago when saying that the province has some money that they're willing to spend to get back into building non-market housing in our province. And if that's the case and if that's what is going to be involved in this project, I really looking forward to that opportunity and the myriad of detail that will accompany this. Because as the recommendation says, that our planning department be authorized to work with the, with the developer and, and BC Housing on a suitable plan. So I'm looking forward to that as well.
All right, thank you, Counselor Jordan. Counselor Johnson?
Worship, I'm also cautiously optimistic on this one. I think it's real positive in the fact that BC Housing and their provincial money is what has been missing out of the Metro Town area in relation to social housing. And it looks like there's a possibility of a, of a partnership with a private developer to build market housing with a society. And I think that is a real positive. It's what the community's been needing and I look forward also to more details in the future.
Excellent. Seeing no further speakers then, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Brings us to item. Brings us to item 10. Moved and, if I can have a seconder? Moved and seconded, the purpose is, the purpose of the proposed rezoning bylaw amendment is to permit construction of a 25-story apartment building with ground-oriented townhouses. Seeing no, seeing no one on the speakers list, all those in favor. Opposed and carried. All right, and that concludes, oh, sorry, way ahead of myself, am I? Oh, yeah, there we are. Where am I here? Oh, there we are, I'm sorry. Such a small little item, then I thought, okay. All right, item 11, my apologies again, moved by Counselor Kang, seconded by Counselor Johnson and the purpose, the proposed rezoning bylaw amendment is to permit office, light industrial and research uses within the existing buildings. Seeing no speakers, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Okay. Now, motion arise and report? Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Motion to adopt the report of the committee? All those in favor, opposed and carried. And bylaws, Counselor Jordan, I think you've got the honors this month, don't you?
My turn. All right, so I would move that Burnaby zoning bylaws, number 13648, 13649, 13650, 13651, 13652 and 13653, be now introduced and read a first time.
Seconded motion. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed and carried.
For second reading, I would move that Burnaby zoning bylaws, number 13641, 13642, 13643 and 13644, be now read a second time.
Seconded motion. Been moved and seconded, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, opposed and carried.
For consideration and third reading, I would move that Burnaby zoning bylaw 13419 be now considered and read a third time.
Seconded motion. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed and carried.
For reconsideration and final adoption, I move that Burnaby zoning bylaw number 13531 and that Burnaby Capital Works bylaw 13647 be now reconsidered and finally adopted, signed by the mayor and clerk and the corporate seal affixed there too.
Seconded motion. I think we may be missing, we may be missing one.
One?
Oh, yes. The page is, I think, stuck together on you.
You know.
Consideration and third reading?
Yes, that's what just.
One before that?
I did that. 13419, consideration and third reading.
That's it?
I'll move it again.
Oh. All right, moved and seconded. Let's carry on then.
Burnaby zoning bylaw 13419 for consideration and third reading.
There we go, now we're official. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, opposed and carried. And again, Counselor Jordan on reconsideration.
And reconsideration and final adoption. Third reading, reconsiderated and final adoption. Burnaby zoning bylaw 13628 be now read, finally adopted, reconsidered and the mayor and the clerk affixed there too.
All right.
Okay.
That's the, that's, that's me as a rookie in the chair probably responsible for all the mayhem this evening, but anyways, thank you, Counselor Jordan, for your patience. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Which brings us to new business. Is there any new business? And seeing no new.